Call the order of the City Council meeting for CDB's Grand Forks from February 7th, 2023. Would City Clerk please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander?
Here.
Council President Mark Olsted?
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Riepeal?
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vetter?
Here.
Ben Pachewinski?
Here.
Dale Helms?
Here.
Brian Larson?
Here.
Karen Peterson?
Here.
Does term call please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open forum, the opportunity of members of the public to address the City Council on items not on the current agenda. Items requiring council action may be deferred to staff boards and commissions for research and future council agenda if appropriate. I know Mr. Reed Hutton would like to speak quick for us, to us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, for letting me sneak up right now and address this. I wanted to address with all the council, some of you, hopefully you've all noticed, we haven't opened outdoor rinks this winter, and I wanted to address that quickly. We've had some questions from citizens over the last couple of weeks and just kind of address some of the reasons that we have not done so. Because we didn't get a great, do a great job admittedly of getting the word out that we weren't going to be opening them. So hopefully I can clear some of that up now. In December, January timeframe, we had a retirement of employees. We also had a full-time employee that got injured, and we started the winter a little short-staffed across the board. We fully intended on opening outdoor rinks when, in the middle of December, when we started the campaign, we spent three, four days heavily flooding Stouse and Nash Parks. And then we got hit with a couple of really heavy snowfalls in a row and really got buried in snow. And the priorities that we're responsible for are taking care of snow removal along the greenway and sidewalks. It's about 14, almost 15 miles of trails and sidewalks we move snow on. Then we had a staff person that's heavily involved in working on outdoor rinks get injured, and they had to go on light duty for some time and weren't able to do the fire hose work that you would need to, to flood. And so ultimately, we got to a point where we were in early January and we were weeks away from where we felt we'd have both rinks ready to skate on. And ultimately decided at that time, we didn't think it'd be a really financially responsible decision to open the outdoor rinks at that point, knowing that in some years, as early as the middle of February, it's warm enough outside that we're losing the outdoor rinks due to the sun and the warmth. So at that time, kind of middle, second week in January, we really just decided to let go of the idea of trying to get the outdoor rinks done and save the resources on it. So one of the responses to not having the outdoor rinks that we're hoping to move forward with, we are moving forward with, a couple of residents have asked, if we don't have the outdoor rinks available, could we find more time on the indoor rinks to be able to just have free open ice for people to come and skate that maybe aren't involved in our organized programs? That's sometimes difficult to do, just in the middle of the seasons, and as we, as we stand with practice schedules and figure skating schedules and games, competitions on weekends. But I think we're getting to a point now in the season where we'll be able to do that. This Sunday on our ice schedule at the Civic Center and the Blue Line Arenas, there is a chance for free open skating, open hockey. The Civic Center on Sunday, the 12th, it's from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. for open skating. At that same time in the Blue Line Arena, it's open hockey. The next, the following week, February 19th, that Sunday, from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m., we have an event we're partnering with Polk County Public Health on for February Fitness Month. It's again, it's just a free open skating at the Civic Center. And we'll continue to do that through the season as long as the indoor rinks are open, trying to navigate time on the weekends, in addition to our Monday and Wednesday family rec skatings, just to try to find time for, for free time for people that want to just get out and skate and be able to do so.
Reed, what are the hours of family rec skating?
Oh.
Sorry.
You're going to quiz me off the top of my head. Monday and Wednesday, both in the evenings, general timeframe, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., give or take a half hour either direction.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Move on to approval minutes.
Mark.
One more.
Sure. Sorry. Sorry about that, man.
Thank you, Reed, for addressing, you know, these questions. Beverly Kasey, East Grand Forks resident. I have had conversations with Reed about the outdoor rinks, and I appreciate him speaking to it. Them were also my concerns. One of my first concerns about it, my children, grandkids had come to town and had wanted to go skating and walked over to Nash Park, and that's not open. And so we said, not, not a problem. We can go, go to, they Googled Stouse Park, and they went over to Stouse Park, and that again is not open, although it says it's open. And so there was a real lack of communication from Parks and Rec that these were not open. This was the 21st of January that we were doing this. And so I had asked somebody, Dale, ask him what, you know, why aren't our parks open? And they had said, well, it was personnel, they didn't think they had people to have the rinks open. So anyway, on Tuesday of the next week, I called and talked to Katie, Reed was out of town, and, you know, asked these questions. And I said, well, you know, if you would just clean the rinks, we would be willing to, you know, we, we can, we can skate, you know, we don't have to have the warming house open. You know, because she had said personnel was an issue that we didn't have, it had been advertised. And she did not mention that there was no ice on the rinks. You know, total lack of communication there, that we didn't, didn't even have ice. Because I said, well, you know, if you would just clean the rinks on a Friday, we could use, we could reuse the rinks on Saturday and Sunday without having the warming house open. So I had a good discussion with Reed about that, and they did, because she had said, well, if you just Googled it, Google does not update, you know, the things. So I said, you know, why didn't it say that it was not open? And so then I, I left a message for Reed, because he was out of town. And then I called Stouse Park, and it too is not updated. It did not say, it said, you know, after it rang a few times, it said, Parks and Rec, you know, press 1 for Reed, 2 for, well, if you're calling to find out if the park is open on Saturday, you're not going to get an answer from Parks and Rec until Monday. So that was a real lack of communication. And that has been fixed. Reed did put a, a new, I called there today, and there's a new message on the Stouse Park site saying that the outdoor rinks are closed. So that part of the communication has been taken care of. But when I talked to Katie the first time, she certainly should have told me that, you know, the, the rinks don't even have ice on them, when I questioned about that. And so then, onto my second part of this, is that when I didn't know there was things, I said, why can't I, as an East Grand Forks resident, why can't I sign up to pick up a key if you don't have personnel that can open the warming house? Why can't I? Why can't I come to Parks and Rec and sign up to go and sit at the, I mean, I'm certainly a responsible citizen. I could certainly do that. I could sit there so my kids could skate. I could open up the warming house. And along those same lines, if we're not going to have the warming houses open in the winter or in the summer, why can't we use them facilities? The Nash Park facility is a wonderful facility. Why can't we use that? Why can't we sign up like we do for the, you know, the outside picnic shelters? Why can't we sign up and, um, sign up, you know, so we can have a family picnic? I can bring my Girl Scouts to the Nash Park facility. I could, my youth group. Why can't we, we could have a birthday party there. Why can't we, as citizens, sign up and use that facility? I know Stouse Park is used in the summer for, you know, all the baseball and stuff, but Nash Park isn't. You know, there's a few soccer games up there. So, you know, that's something I want you to think about, that we could reserve Nash Park facility for the citizens of East Grand Forks. So, and then onto my third one, and Reed is, you know, addressing this one, is about ice time. If you're not going to have outside ice time for us, the families and the adults in this community are paying for the Parks and Recs facilities. Between our property taxes and our income taxes and our, you know, sales taxes, we are paying for these. We should have dedicated time at the, one of the three ice facilities every single week, every week. The, you know, you're looking at improving, I'm all about improvements to our facilities, all of those things. And so we should have, it should be part of the schedule. Say, every single Sunday, from 3:00 to 7:00, we should have ice time dedicated, 3:00 to 5:00, family skating. 5:00 to 7:00, pickup hockey, adult hockey. Because Nash Park was used a lot for skating and for just pickup hockey games, you know, but adult hockey skating, so they could, they could use it. So that's my proposal to you. Dedicate time for that. And it should be free. If you want to monitor who's there, have them sign in or pay a buck or something, but it should not be charged, because it's the, it's the families, and it's the adults in this community that are paying for it. You know, they're, they're paying it, and they should have some dedicated ice time. So that's my proposal, is every single, family time is not Mondays and Wednesdays when you have your free rec, or your rec time, because you've got kids, they got to go to school the next day, they got to have supper, they got to get ready for school, you got the adults that, you know, have to work the next day. So Mondays and Wednesdays are not good family rec time. So go for a Sunday afternoon from 3:00 to 7:00. And I, you know, understand that you have dedicated employees to each of those buildings, so they can't, because I had asked Reed, well, why can't someone else do it then? And they said, well, you're hired for specific jobs and these things. So my thought was, why not the person that's on light duty, that's dedicated to the outside rinks, and we don't have them, that person could work from 3:00 to 7:00 every Sunday, you know? And one of the three ice arenas have got to have some availability. We don't care, I mean, Blue Line Club, every Sunday have that time. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anybody else have anything? Move on to the approval minutes for January 4th joint meeting, January 17th council meeting, and January 24th work session. Move by Riepeal.
Second.
Second by Larson. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Olsted?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pachewinski?
Yes.
Riepeal?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Skidra bed lettings, there is none. Skidra public carings, there is none. Consent agenda, there is none. Move on to acknowledge or receipt of reports, officers, boards, and commissions. Regular minimum minutes of water, light, power, and building commission for December 21st, 2022, and also the city financial statements as of December 31st, 2022. Communication, there is none. Move on to old business. Consider adopting ordinance number 33, fourth series, amending City Code Chapter 152 entitled zoning code, adding subparaphrase to uses by special permit section 152.197, and by adopting reference of City Code Chapter 1, Section 10.99, which among other things contain penalty provisions, second reading. Move by Vetter.
Second.
Second by Riepeal. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Olsted?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pachewinski?
Yes.
Riepeal?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Move on to new business. Consider adopting resolution 23-02-16, awarding the 2023 City Project Number 3 for ADA improvements to Tony Anderson Construction for a total construction cost of $101,567. Motion, please. Move by Larson.
Second.
Second by Vetter. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Olsted?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pachewinski?
Yes.
Riepeal?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 8, consider declaring the Ford self-contained breathing apparatus respirators with face masks as surplus and donate the equipment to the Alberato Fire Department. Move by Vetter. Second by Riepeal. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Olsted?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pachewinski?
Yes.
Riepeal?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 9, consider approving the purchase of the Ford Police Interceptor SUV from the Temborti Ford for $42,002.88, equipped the vehicle by Guardian Fleet Safety for $18,243.56, and striping of the vehicle being completed by Custom Stripes for $620. Is there a motion? Move. Move by Riepeal.
Second.
Second by Vetter. Questions or discussion? Chief Headland?
Thank you. Mr. President, I'd just like to respond to some of the questions that were brought up at the work session. Mr. Riepeal had brought up the question of the possibility of getting a vehicle at perhaps a lower cost, because there is a very significant increase in the cost of the vehicle itself. I contacted Christian Brothers Ford in Kirkston. They stated that at the request of Kirkston PD, they'd been trying to locate these types of vehicles and have had zero luck at finding them. They gave me some information that I didn't know. Apparently Ford has dramatically reduced the fleet incentive. He said it typically used to be about $5,000 to $7,000 per vehicle. It's now down to closer to $1,000 a vehicle. So that alone is a big chunk of that increased cost. So unfortunately, he said if you have your, your ability to get one, get it. So I guess that's, but I do want to make sure you knew that I at least looked into it.
Thank you.
And then Mr. Helms also had some questions regarding our existing school resource officer vehicle, because our tentative plan was to have the pickup truck transition into being used by our school resource officer. Mr. Helms, and I agree 100% with him, he said he really likes that orange car. It stands out. It sends a good message. 100% agree with him. I talked to Officer Gunderson, Corporal Gunderson, excuse me, who's our school resource officer, several occasions since our last meeting. That vehicle, the 2011 Dodge Charger, only has a little over 66,000 miles. So miles really isn't an issue. In my mind, it had come down to more, do we need two vehicles? And I was thinking significant expenses. I checked with the admin office today, and they informed me that on the insurance costs for those, the Charger only costs $133 a year. So as far as insurance goes, it's really not expensive. Corporal Gunderson said most of the time during the year, he really enjoys that car. He says when we have significant snow events, totally different story. In those days, he'd probably dramatically prefer driving the pickup truck with the all-wheel drive. We can certainly consider keeping both with him using the Dodge Charger, at least for the time being, on days as allowed, and then transitioning into the pickup truck perhaps in the worst weather, if the council is, is in approval of that idea.
I did speak to my kids about this, just because they are in high school. My daughter did indicate that it is somewhat, I'm not quite sure what the word I want to use, is less intimidating?
Absolutely.
That when they see the resource car, then they know that it's Officer Gunderson, as opposed to a police vehicle. The other question that she had about it was that the design that is on the Charger was a school contest, and would that go on the pickup? Or would that be something that's different?
Certainly. We would probably do something very similar. That's one of the conversations that Corporal Gunderson and I had. Assuming we do transition either full or part-time, that pickup truck to be used as the SRO, we want to make it distinctly the school resource officer vehicle. We are looking at possibly changing the striping on the sides. Obviously, it's a black pickup truck. It's, we're not going to pay to repaint it, but the striping is relatively inexpensive. We could change some of the striping, all the striping, depending on, you know, what ultimately is decided. There is some cost to that, of course. One big one that he suggested was that we put some type of opaque tinting of a diagram or some type or another on the, on the rear window of the pickup truck, something to be very obvious from behind, but that he still is able to see through and create, you know, good vision for him, for anybody that's coming behind him, but stand out as a message. And of course, we'd want something on, on both sides and possibly the front as well, indicating that it's a vehicle designed for the school resource officer vehicle. That wouldn't preclude us from using it for, you know, the other things. When we're using it, as we would anticipate using it in the future, it's going to be for messy things, sloppy things, big things that we have to haul that we just don't have room for in the regular squad cars. So that's, you know, that was, I guess, one of the biggest factors that I don't want to get rid of it. But I'm especially, the cost on the pickup truck is a little over $1,000 for the insurance. So, I mean, that's not insignificant, but the $133 for us to continue to insure the Charger, in the grand scheme of things, that's not very much money. So if council would like us to keep both in service, I would be very much in favor of that and have no issue with that. If you want us to reduce and go to one car, despite the advantages of the Charger, I guess I would be inclined to move towards just the pickup truck because of the, the need that we have for that vehicle.
Chief Headland, when you accept this vehicle, and when you tell them, how long until you get it?
I haven't been told yet. We, we do have it on order with 1044 on a tentative basis. They basically required us to place an order, but they said if we have to cancel, it was not going to be an issue, because they said they will have no problem selling it.
I'm not asking to cancel. I'm just.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Well, I'm sure we're going to have plenty of time to discuss the use of the Charger.
Exactly.
Before we even get to the other vehicle, that's the point I'm trying to get at.
I think it was roughly May when we got the vehicle last year, and that was, were placed roughly the same timeframe.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Pachewinski?
I like what Karen had to say about if you get the new truck, I think there should be another contest with the schools. Have the kids make up a cool design for it. I think that'd be good.
Appreciate that. Any other questions, finally?
Does anyone have anything? Not, roll call, please.
Thank you very much.
Olsted?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pachewinski?
Yes.
Riepeal?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 10, consider approving the purchase of the John Deere 410G backhoe from RDO Equipment for a total of $46,000. Is there a motion? Move by Riepeal. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Larson. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Olsted?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pachewinski?
Yes.
Riepeal?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 10, consider adopting resolution 23-02-17, requesting Polk County to financially participate in the bridge study to be conducted by SRF Consulting. Move. By Vetter?
Second.
Second by Larson. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Olsted?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pachewinski?
Yes.
Riepeal?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Move on to claims. Consider authorizing the city administrative clerk treasurer to issue payment of recumbent bills and payroll. Move. By Riepeal?
Second.
Second by Vetter. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Olsted?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pachewinski?
Yes.
Riepeal?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Regander?
Thanks, Mr. President. Over the last year, I've had a lot of people ask me what I think about the Foo Fang corn milling project. And I always gave the same answer. This project has some pretty powerful pros and cons, some reasons to do it, reasons not to do it. And over and over, I'd say, let's let the process play out. Let's let the process work the way it should, gathering information, fact-finding, and make a good decision when all that information has been gathered. Well, now, the information is all in, the decision's been made. Grand Forks City Council went through an exhaustive and deliberative process over the past year. They gathered all relevant information. I believe they made the right choice regarding the plant. No one should feel that their voice was not heard in this process. They listened to every voice. No one should feel disenfranchised following the decision. You were part of making the decision. And no one should ever come along and say, I told you so, because it was necessary to hear from every single voice. It's no secret that we've had some disagreements with our colleagues on the west side of the river, especially as it pertains to bridges. But I will tell you this, as I consider Mayor Brandon Bochensky, as I consider Council President Dana Sandy and the entire city council over there, as I consider Administrator Todd Feeling and all the city staff, I will tell you this much. In my view and in my experience, I have never had occasion to question their motives or their fitness for the work that they're doing. It's time for us all, then, to pull together and work on the challenges and opportunities that we face and move on from this. But just know, they're good, good people, good to work with, and they have our, our full trust and support, at least speaking for myself. Number 2, from Mark Dragich of our Parks and Recreation, I'd like to give some special recognition to our Mite and Girls 4U parents. Last week, we hosted our annual Lee Coffstead Memorial Mite and Girls 8U Jamboree. 27 teams participated. The event is a great event each year for players and families and brings many people into our community. The event takes a great deal of planning, preparation, and volunteer hours to run smoothly and provide a fun hockey experience for all involved. A group of Mite and 8U parents led by Kelly Berg did a fantastic job with the event. Around the arenas, on Saturday, we received many nice compliments about the event, and also received email and thank you notes and gratitude from visitors for a job well done. So thank you again to everybody involved with that. And finally, had the opportunity to participate in the East Grand Forks Vintage Snowmobile Show this past weekend. They had over 100 sleds on display, and some going all the way back to the earliest days of snowmobiling. They had one prop-driven one that looked like the front end of an airplane, and it was really cool. A special thanks to Merlin Werner, one of the organizers, who let me drive his Arctic Cat Jaguar, I think it was about a 1971 model, from right in front of the Blue Moose, along the trail over to the Valley Gulf for some refreshments, and then back over. And appreciate the trust that you put in me for using your sled. It's a great way to honor the memory of Anna Kozel, great way to raise money for the Relay for Life. So thanks again for letting me join your event. To any of you who have not been part of it, come on out. It's really cool. You will have flashbacks to the 60s and 70s if you ever were around snowmobiles as a kid. It's really a nice event and well, well-run. Brings a lot of people into town. People came from miles, all, all directions from here, all enjoying a fun day. So thanks to everybody who put that one on. That's it.
Mr. Vetter?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Pachewinski?
Nothing today.
Mr. Riepeal?
Nothing.
Ms. Peterson?
Nothing.
Mr. Larson?
Nothing today. Thank you.
Mr. Murphy?
Just that I will be out on Thursday.
Mr. Gallston?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Emery?
I have nothing.
Anything from the department heads? Okay. Thank you so much. We are going to recess into closed session. This portion of the meeting will be closed pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D dot, dot 05 subsection 2B to discuss preliminary consideration of allegation and charges under 13D dot 05 subsection 2A and B, and 2, evaluation and performance of individual under section 13D dot 05 subsection 3A of an individual subject to public body's authority. Is there a motion to move into closed session? Move. By Riepeal?
Second.
Second by Vetter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. We'll adjourn and move downstairs for the closed session.
And we can get down there fairly quickly. One of the, the, one of the people we have on Zoom is on a time limit. They have to be gone by 6:00.
Okay, are we doing it here, or when are we doing this? All right, now we're back into open session. Move on to number 14. Consider taking action based on discussion from closed session. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. So what I have before you is what I'd be requesting would be a motion to enter into a retainer with Pemberton Law Firm as a third-party consultant to look at the current status of the police department in ways to improve our staffing.
Okay. Move. Riepeal makes a motion?
Second.
Second by Larson. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Olsted?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pachewinski?
Yes.
Riepeal?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Move on to number 15. I appreciate you waiting. Discussion on backyard chickens is on the agenda. I think I'll turn it over to Mr. Murphy first, and then, from there.
Thank you. And again, I will reiterate your appreciation for you sticking around and, and taking this. I, it's, it's always hard to anticipate how long a discussion will go. So I guess I'll just say, Ms. Dewey is here tonight to address the council. She has contacted us previously, I believe once before, yep, and then has contacted us here again about the idea of having what we sometimes refer to as backyard chickens or urban chickens. There's different, different names for that. I believe she has a handout that she has presented to the council, and she had asked if she could address the council to give the, an update of what her plans are and what she would like to see done. So that is my report. are and what she would like to see done. So, that is my report.
Step up to the microphone and introduce yourself and your address, please.
Sure, absolutely. My name is Hannah Dewey. We live at 103 Fifth Street Northwest in East Grand Forks here. Should I just jump in? Okay. So, the handout that I presented to everybody is just a proposal for how we might go about allowing backyard chickens in a really responsible way in East Grand Forks, where we have an expectation of homeowners to set about a plan for the number of fowl that they pretend, plan to have, and the plans that they have for manure management, as well as how they plan to have it laid out in their yard, as far as distance from other neighbors, foraging space, responsible space for a coop and a run, so that we really can do this in a very excellent and organized way. Because I know that a lot of people have asked and advocated for backyard chickens, but I was hopeful that with maybe some more thought put into it and some responsible restrictions, that it might be more of a consideration. So, what you'll see on the handout is a horrible drawing of my backyard, and I'm so sorry about that. I am a much better chicken keeper than an artist, I promise. And following that would be a manure management plan where I've laid out how we would dispose of the waste and how we would utilize the waste responsibly to improve soil conditions in our yard, and the benefits to those soil condition improvements, which are listed. I don't know if it's helpful for me to read, but the increase of beneficial insects, lawn and garden health, and then water and flood absorption, which we know is an issue in our area many years. But having healthy fertilizers like that put back into the soil definitely helps with soil health. Another benefit of having hens in the backyard would be that they do eat pest-type bugs. And I know we spray for mosquitoes every year and really try to keep down pests. They're very helpful for that. So, I've just laid out some of the details, approximately how much waste one chicken produces per year, how much homeowners could responsibly utilize, putting back into the soil without damaging the pH of the soil. And again, this is just my personal plan, but I was hoping that laying it out would potentially set an example for other people making the same type of request. The next bullet point under the manure management would be, again, a plan for the number of hens that anybody intends to require, intends to acquire, and then an explanation of how hatcheries will sell sext chickens so that people can ensure that they are just getting hens. I do think that limiting or restricting roosters entirely is very wise in an urban setting. I don't think there's any need for fertilized eggs and having chicks, as that would create a need for additional permits as more chicks were born. And also, roosters can just be very challenging to handle and keep quiet. So, that is my recommendation there. And I just laid out, we're a family of six. We also have a live-in nanny. So, what I would propose for our home is that we would be allowed to have four hens, and that would put us at, when they're laying, around 28 eggs a week, which would still be less than our home consumption, as we typically have six to 10 eggs that we consume a day, depending on how much our nanny bakes sourdough treats, which is a lot, and they're delicious. The next point that I talked about was how we might time out permits. My recommendation is that permit requests would be put in in the early spring, allowing homeowners time to plan and purchase for the supplies that they need, and getting hens at an age that's appropriate for them to be laying by summer, so that they're settled in and healthy, a larger size, before they're going into the winter. And that an initial permit would be extended for 18 months, rather than some of our surrounding communities have permits always expire at the end of the year. December 31st is a pretty challenging day to get rid of chickens, whether you're trying to butcher them or rehome them. Of course, with the weather that we have, that would be a really challenging time to have a permit run out and not really have anything to do with those birds if you chose not to extend your permit, or if, for some reason, your permit was denied. So, I think ultimately extending that to an 18-month window would give people until August. In August, it's pretty easy to rehome chickens. Most people with rural properties, especially if you're selling them for very cheap or offering them for free because you can no longer have them, a lot of rural homeowners will take them and have no problem butchering them or rehoming them to their current group of chickens. So, all of that is laid out. Again, this is just a really basic initial request. I am totally open to any additional thoughts or additional restrictions that anybody wanted to consider or put up for discussion, but I hope that this is a decent-sounding proposal that you guys are willing to put some thought into allowing residents to at least request permits for.
Anybody have any questions right off the bat? Mr. Riappel?
Quite common in chicken coops is the salmonella problem. Were you aware of that?
Salmonella hasn't been as big of a problem as it is often made out to be. I know that the USDA and the FDA release salmonella outbreak statistics every year. It is largely an issue, actually, on the outside of an egg. It's not something that happens on the inside.
Cross over.
Right, yeah. I'm sorry. And I don't mean to say anything that you are all educated about at all, just my understanding. And that is taken care of with responsible handwashing and egg washing and, you know, just correct chicken care. If that was a concern, absolutely, maybe part of the permit would be how people are managing storing their eggs, or how they're managing, you know, cleanliness in their home during chores or anything like that. I think that would be pretty easy to make a, I don't mean easy, but to make an additional line in the permit request, asking homeowners to explain how they would handle that.
I don't necessarily think that it's just the, how the eggs are handled, as it can be transmitted to animals, and then animals can also transmit it to people.
Right.
So, that would also maybe be part of that plan.
Yeah, just asking.
If you did have other animals that came into your yard.
Mm-hmm.
Or stuff like that. Just because if you are using it for compost, that bacteria will be present.
Yeah, absolutely.
It can stay inside a body for up to 10 years.
Mm-hmm.
Where it can transmit to others.
Yeah, absolutely. We do have laying hens at my parents' farm, and we've had them for about 10 years. And so, I've had a fair bit of experience with that. We have a lot of volunteers and participants that come out to our ranch for different events, and so we do have some pretty extraordinary standards of cleanliness out there, where we have kind of a bio wash for hands and boots for people going in and out of the coop into different areas, so it doesn't spread to different animals, because it is a farm with multiple different animals. And so, I'm thankful that you guys brought that up. That would definitely be an appropriate measure to ask residents how they would handle it. And that would help vet out maybe some people who were eager to have chickens, but maybe didn't have an understanding of all of the nuances of it yet.
Dale, any questions?
Mr. Council President?
Dale, if you have something, Dale?
Yeah, if you don't mind, please. I think the city already has an ordinance that's been in place since the, back in the 80s about farm animals and stuff. I don't believe that we should be changing that. And then with our coyote problems is increasing and everything else, and I can just see, you know, a dog or something getting a hold of one of these things, and now we got another problem on our hands, you know, maybe a lawsuit or something. I'm totally against allowing us to have chickens in the city, so that would be my vote.
Mr. Larson?
Yeah, thank you. I've been asking a few people in East Grand Forks about their thoughts, just trying to get a sense of the public opinion. And, you know, I don't talk to that many people, so it's a pretty small section of the population. One person who I'm really close to and really, really respect for your opinion was strongly in favor. But then there's a number of others, just from varying backgrounds, who are not in favor. And so, what I think would help me on this process is to understand, what is the level of public support out there? If there was a petition, if you had a lot of feedback through some sort of internet poll, or just so that we can understand, like, is it a very small percentage of residents that are in favor of this, and that there's a majority against? Well, that would be really important, I think, for the council to understand when we go into vote. Is it closer to being split? I just honestly don't have a sense for how many people are in favor, other than the dozen or so folks that I see every day, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, that's just my feedback. I just, I feel like without enough information, I would be inclined to vote no, just to be safe, because I feel like I don't know how much support there is out there for this. I did grow up on a farm. We had laying hens. We also had roosters. Butched many chickens in my life, so I get it. And I've lived in communities where they do have urban chickens as well, urban hens. So, I feel like I'd be ready to vote, but without having a sense of where the population of East Grand Forks stands, I think I would just have to be, I'd have to play it safe and say no. So, that would be my feedback to the pro-chicken contingent, is let us know who's out there.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, what I've seen in the online communities where I've shared what my plan is to bring to you guys today, it does seem like it's about split, absolutely. I think the benefit of having the community split isn't necessarily about people's opinions or feelings regarding the matter, so much as maybe the benefit of not everybody wants them, so the whole city won't be overrun with chickens. You know, it's not like we'll have this huge issue where every single house wants four chickens, and the whole house, when the wind blows, or the whole city, when the wind blows, smells like a chicken coop. I think the benefit of having maybe less people interested or a split population would be that we wouldn't necessarily be, you know, overrun with requests and permits. It wouldn't increase so much workload on the city council to manage permits. And I understand that some of it is about making sure that the public is pleased with the decisions that you guys have made, but I do think that there are a lot of people out there who are interested in the potential for it, especially specifically right now. The thought from a lot of people that know much more about recessions than I do is that this recession would last approximately 18 months and be, you know, a rather challenging economic time. And I think that making considerations for shorter periods of time based on economic hardship would be a really reasonable consideration, at least, knowing that right now, the cost of living is pretty significantly increased. And something as basic as eggs that we use in a lot of baking, very healthy protein for the majority of people who don't have any type of egg allergy or anything, of course, would benefit from having the opportunity to raise chickens and eggs themselves, if given the opportunity. And I totally understand it might not be the popular, I'm not sure, you know, 50/50, or 60/40, or maybe everybody hates it, and just me and my friends think it's cool. I just, I wouldn't know enough about the public opinion in regards to that. So, and unfortunately, you know, I think because we're so close with Grand Forks, there's probably a lot of Grand Forks opinions mixed in as well. You know, I don't think that I, I don't think I personally would have a great way to poll just East Grand Forks residents to know exactly how people feel about it. But I would say I had, you know, pretty split responses from people. Yeah.
Mr. Pakchavinsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've also been around chickens. My mother-in-law's got a coop. They keep between like 20 and 50 layers. I've seen the coop, and it is messy. But my biggest concern would be what comes after chickens. If someone wants a pig, like, where do we draw the line there? So, I would be inclined to vote no on this. I think if you want to, you know, poll the town and see if you can get some drum up, some support, I think we could maybe revisit it, but my vote on this would be no.
Yeah, I think the beauty of the position that you guys have is that you could draw the line at any point, you know? You could certainly just say no to any further requests, you know, whether it's roosters, or pigs, or, you know, pet llamas, you know? Just fortunately, because you guys do have the authority that you have in the city, you know, being able to say, "Well, we've drawn, we've drawn the lines at chickens." That was, you know, that was a tough vote for us to make and say yes to, but we certainly aren't going to allow anything different.
I think one of the things that, you know, I've seen out there were the public opinion that comes in, and it does flow from people that do not live within the city limits. And maybe they're in an area where they do allow them. And maybe that person doesn't have one, but hey, we allow them in this city. But there's nothing around their house, or not in their backyard, or not. So, I mean, so it's hard to judge or even measure how a community thinks, because, like you said, how do you poll them? How do you poll the city? Because there are people who comment out there that don't from here, aren't even from Minnesota, North Dakota, they come from everywhere, just because they want to put their two cents into it. And I think that's the difficult thing for us, is determining that factor of the citizens going, "Okay, yeah, we're..." Of course, people that want something, a lot of times, we don't get people to come in that don't want it. You know, we don't see that side of it.
Right.
And, you know, I've talked to some people. I've probably, 10 or less people, and every one of them, maybe have had experience with it, or flat out said no. So, a small batch of people that I've talked to, you know, last week, when this went to the work session, we were out of town, and I apologize, and I know you weren't able to attend either. So, it'd been a great time during the work session to walk through all this. And I'm glad we're having a discussion, having an opportunity, because I think everyone up here wants to know what the citizens' thoughts. And I think Mr. Larson, Mr. Pakchavinsky talked about how do we gauge and where do we stop? You know, I've looked at the Grand Forks information, you know? I did that last week, and I refreshed it this weekend, and looked at it, how their process is. You know, they have a questionnaire that goes out to each neighbor, but doesn't really lay it out of which neighbor is, you know, you know, is it 200 feet, is it 45 feet, whatever it may be. So, I think that, to me, looking at all this information, and you coming to us and, "Hey, this is an idea I want to do." And I know you mentioned that you have luxury of having some things at your mom and dad's place, out at the ranch there, with all the horses and stuff, so, which is great. I'm glad it's right there, you know, you're able to do that. But I think, I would like more information. I would like to be able to hear more from the citizens, not just the ones that want it, the ones that have concerns of, maybe they've lived next to somebody in their life, and they've had some questions, or they've lived there and no problems. So, I guess that's my thought. And I know that Mr. Riappel has a comment with that of being next to chicken coops. I'll let him address that in a second. But I think more discussion needs to be had in this, not to drag this thing on and...
Absolutely.
But we want to make sure we're doing things right, correctly, and not, you know, going, "Yeah, we want to do it," you know, and then we find out there's bigger problems.
Sure, absolutely.
So, I think my position is I would like to have more discussion on it, and I would like to be able to talk to more citizens, what their thoughts are.
Absolutely. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, if there is not, if you choose not to lift a restriction, so right now, there is a restriction that says no backyard chickens. If you choose not to lift a restriction, does the city council have the authority to give someone on a one-off basis a conditional use permit on an experimental basis? Or does it have to be, we're allowing the whole city to do this or not, in the name of, you know, fairness and equality?
Question I would make part of Mr. Murphy and Mr. Gullston?
That is a good question. Typically, a conditional use permit is not something that would be experimental. Typically, a conditional use permit is something where it might be allowed in another area of the community, but with, for zoning restrictions or something like that, if it's a residential area, and it's typically something that's allowed maybe more in an industrial or commercial use, you can get a conditional use permit. But that tends, typically, what that's looked at is that needs to be a hardship or something that is unique to the property for that type of situation, where you would make an exception in that rule, because it's something that is out of the ordinary. The idea of an experimental conditional use permit is not one that I have run across in my time. I'm not familiar with one. I haven't seen one. I'm not sure if the city attorney has or not, but I just have not in my 10 years as a city administrator.
Well, typically, a conditional use permit is something that's a zoning issue. This isn't actually a zoning issue that we have. This is a, this is more of a, we have an ordinance that says it's illegal to have chickens, or horses, or pigs, or cows, or roosters, or ducks, or turkeys, you know, in the city limits. So, it would have to be modified that way. And to be honest with you, I've never looked into it, have to look at it, to answer your question, on an experimental basis.
Yeah.
So, I have no answer to that right now. But typically, you're not going to get a conditional use permit for an ordinance that says it's illegal.
Sure, absolutely.
Because it's illegal to host them.
And to be clear, too, my mindset right now, just so everybody understands, my point is, I'm a no right now, but I want to be able to be open and discuss it. So, just so you know where I'm at.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm going to go to Mr. Riappel, then back to you, Mr. Larson.
I can say I'm not as open to the issue as maybe some of the others on this board. I had a young gentleman living across the street from me in Grand Forks that decided he was going to raise some chickens, because he wanted eggs. We had three, four hunting dogs in the neighborhood that went absolutely berserk same time, every day, and it caused a lot of friction. There was a lot of bad blood between everybody. They threatened to come over and just take care of those chickens themselves.
Mm-hmm.
And it turned out that this little rule in Grand Forks where they do a petition to everybody probably started up because of that. So my wife works in the medical industry, too, and she is not for it at all, and I kind of am going to agree, I would vote no. And because of what happened there, I don't want to see it happen in East Grand Forks, I'll be honest with you.
Yeah. That was part of my request with the thought of an experimental conditional use permit, because I think a lot of people who are potentially opposed to the idea at this point are opposed to it, maybe due to a lack of experience with it, or, you know, a lack of knowing how it would play out. You know, there is some fear with not knowing, like, would this ruin my neighborhood, right? If Hannah decided to get chickens, does the whole neighborhood go to pot? And I don't think we have a great answer for people who maybe have those questions. And also, some of the, you know, salmonella is a big scary word, and, you know, really understanding what the realities of those dangers are and how to work against them, what you can do to stay healthy. You know, I think a lot of that is, would be really beautiful on an educational standpoint to let people know how that goes and what measures you can take. And again, you know, a very well-laid out permit where people have to really explain themselves pretty thoroughly on how they'd like to manage that. You know, I didn't put anything in here about neighbors. I feel differently about that, but that's just my personal opinion, so.
Larson?
Yeah, so just for some clarity on where we are here today, is that, was this intended to be voted on, or was this an update? What are we expected to do with this agenda item?
Mr. Riappel, do you want to address that, or do you want Mr. Murphy to address?
I brought it up with initial thing that we had discussed at the work session last week, but some of you weren't available to that, but you had the availability to look at the tape and read some of the information. I was in, under the impression that we put it to a vote tonight.
And I apologize for not making it to the work session horribly. The accident with the two vehicles that had a head-on collision in Velva was my husband's best friend, so we were just out of the area and unable to make it entirely, and do feel strongly about it and wanted to bring it to your attention, but I apologize for missing that.
Mayor?
For my two cents worth, I do think it merits further discussion, to the point of wanting more feedback from the community about their preferences. Please know, as we face you here right now, we see the economic benefit that it would bring to your family. Something you didn't say, but I think is important, and I feel like maybe you do, too, is, you know, for your family to see the whole, where our food comes from, the whole, all of that. I mean, it's really a big deal to appreciate agriculture, to see, you know, soup to nuts, where do we get our food? So, and I think you would do it amazingly well. I just, to look at you, to hear how efficiently you would run this, I have zero doubt that you'd do it very, very well. The problem we would have is, as you open that door to everybody else, and the other thing I'd like to hear then, and maybe somebody already has a handle on this, if and when somebody goes sideways, if by chance we would approve it, what does enforcement look like? Who would do the enforcement? What would be the steps involved? Step one, a warning. Step two of this, step three, we revoke your permit. So what are those steps? And who would be the one to carry out those steps? I'd want to see that in spades, what that would look like as part of our discussion.
Mr. Vedder?
Thank you. My personal feelings on that, we've already got dogs and cats, and dogs carry rabies, cats carry rabies, but no one goes around to make sure that, does your dog have rabies shots? I mean, no one monitors the backyard. Are you cleaning up after your pets in your backyard? We have leash laws, and no one monitors the leashes. There's cats that roam my neighborhood left and right and use my sandbox for their duty, and no one's monitoring that. I think we already have laws. I think if someone's yard, because they had dogs, got to the point where it was smelling and a nuisance, we've got the nuisance laws that neighbors would complain to the city, and we'd use the nuisance laws to combat that. And that might be as simple as putting that in the permit process.
51 pounds of dry manure times how many chickens? I mean, it could get out of hand in a hurry.
Well, and that's 51 pounds in a year, so it's not like a chicken drops a 51-pound stool in a day, and then you're like, what am I going to do with this big present?
Yep.
So it is very spread out, and a lot of it naturally composted in the rain and snow throughout the year. So it does, when you're just looking at that number, like if I brought in 51 pounds right now to show you guys, it would seem like a lot, but over 365 days where the majority of it is going to naturally work back, not the majority, that's an unfair explanation, I shouldn't use that word, but much of it will naturally compost back into the yard, right, just, you know, in real time.
But if they let their herd get out of hand, and the numbers were out of control, I mean, that's how this thing starts to fulminate in a not-so-good way.
Yeah.
Not sure you call a group of chickens a herd, but...
And the same is said with dogs and cats. There are people that, in town, that have more dogs and cats in their home than our city ordinance allows.
And then we have to come in with enforcement, and I just want to know what that looks like.
Yeah, and I think that process is already there. Whether you want to solidify it again in the permit process, I'm not opposed to that, and as you can tell, I'm not necessarily opposed to chickens either. I think it's worth a shot.
Please show the back end. If somebody gets out of bounds on this, what does that look like? Please. Any good ordinance has to have a penalty provision included, or it's not worth anything.
Larson?
Yeah, I'd like to table this item and then have further discussion in the future with more information and hopefully some additional public feedback.
Does the city council have any way to aid in that, in contacting community members for a poll? I mean, I can talk to my neighbors and my friends, but that's, again, a very limited pool of people. And if you guys would like further, you know, to really extend that net to all members of the community, so everybody has an opportunity to share their two cents if they feel strongly for or against it, do you guys have a way to cast that net well? Because I do not personally.
Do you want me to take that one?
Yeah.
The short answer is no, we really don't have a good way to do that. What we have, we have a process where we put out information for notices, alerts, those types of things, but we really don't have a provision where we would get feedback. I certainly can look at what some of our options are. It's not that, it's unknown that cities do this, just that our setup now, we don't really have a good way for feedback. It's mostly our information is going out one way. It's like, we have a snow emergency coming up, we have this, you know, we get the information out there, but it's not really a good provision for feedback. I do know there are some cities that have some provisions for that. I will see what some of those are. I see some of these...
There may be an option on our city website, because there's a community page that we have not really utilized, just because of the lack of time to really dig into those modules, but there might be a possibility there. The only problem with that is getting people to go to that to respond, but there might be something already available on our city website where we can collect feedback.
Maybe the media will pick up on this, and you guys, everybody, just check out our website in the coming days, and we'd love to hear from everybody. You can email us, our email addresses are on the city website also.
Yep.
And we'll tabulate off of that.
Absolutely, and I'm happy to help with any legwork. I don't want to put it back on you guys, but I, of course, don't have access to the citizens of East Grand Forks the way that you do as a whole.
I'll give you a second, Ben. One of my worries, too, is, like I said before, is, is it truly a citizen making the comments and taking this?
Absolutely.
That's my biggest worry, because if it's not a citizen of East Grand Forks, it's worthless to me.
There was one, when you asked me the question, there was one gentleman from Laramore who really blew up my social media with a lot of negative comments that were not educated or necessarily even about the issue, but just very volatile, and that's unfortunate that we have to contend with that, but hopefully that wouldn't happen in a more organized way, like maybe on a state website or something.
Pachivinsky?
Thank you. I would suggest first off, talking to your neighbors, your immediate neighbors, and see how they feel about it. Because if your neighbors are against it, you're going to have a problem, just as a neighbor, you don't want to be a bad neighbor, right? And then one thing that I would consider is, I wouldn't want to buy a house next to a chicken coop. But if you want to move forward with it, I would suggest some sort of a petition that is something that we can track, you know, names, phone numbers, addresses of whoever signs it, and then, you know, if you can get others to help you with the petition. I know you mentioned that, you know, you don't have that kind of, the ability to do I think that's the process that we'd want to take. The city's website, I don't know, is the best way to get that effort. I don't see a lot of engagement there. But then again, if we do have a survey, we would maybe get some nos and yeses on there as well, but if you're doing a petition, you're probably going to get someone else that's going to start a petition to go no.
Sure, absolutely. And if it improves engagement around this issue, you guys may see that there's additional engagement in the city in general, which would be very cool.
Yeah, just the comment that we had earlier, that a lot of times citizen engagement isn't always super great on some topics.
Yeah, absolutely.
I guess we have a, to table it, from Mr. Larson, and I guess we need a second on that also.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Pachivinsky.
Is there further discussion? Make sure Mr. Helms, don't want to leave you out.
You're going to mute?
You're muted.
Yeah, I think I'm good. Everybody's covered pretty much most of the stuff that we need there, I think, so...
Any other questions or comments from anyone?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We'll take a roll call. Table it.
Oldstead?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
By Larson.
Second.
Second by Riappel. Any, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion is carried, means adjourned.